I would like to call this Village Board Meeting of Thursday, January 9th, 2025 to order. Will the Clerk please take the role?
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the Flag of Legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its people, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move on to, okay, first of all, I welcome everybody in 25. Happy New Year, everybody. And now we move on to petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the Village President will be Saturday, February 1st, at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Village President or Village Board, please call the Village President's office anytime at (630) 909-5302, or contact your district trustee. Keep your New Year's fitness resolutions going by signing up for a fitness membership at the Sports Hub. Sign up or renew a membership in the month of January and pay just $150 for the entire year, or $11 for one month from the date of purchase. A membership to the Sports Hub Fitness Center also gives you access to our open gym, indoor walking track, half-off featured fitness classes, and racquetball courts. For more information on the Sports Hub Fitness Center, please call (630) 260-6060.
Thank you. Trustee District 2.
Online scams are becoming increasingly sophisticated, making it essential to stay vigilant. Be cautious of unsolicited emails, messages, or phone calls requesting personal or financial information. Avoid clicking on suspicious links or downloading attachments from unknown sources, and always verify the legitimacy of websites before making purchases or providing sensitive data. Protect yourself by using strong, unique passwords and enabling two-factor authentication whenever possible. Remember, if something seems too good to be true, it's probably is. Stay alert and safeguard your information. Join us for the Glendale Heights seasonal market on the first and third Thursdays of each month. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee District 3, Light, please.
Happy New Year, everybody. The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glendale Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7, C9, rope lights, and LED lights. For more information on holiday light recycling, please call (630) 260-6000. Join the Village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection effort annually. The Village delivers beautiful written decorated Valentine's cards collected from the community to Illinois Veterans Home and Veterans Hospital. Drop off your Valentine's at Village Hall by Tuesday, February 4th, to ensure a timely delivery manner for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with cards. If you have any questions, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123. Thank you.
Trustee District 4.
Registered today for Mother-Son Dance. Be ready to have the time of your life at our Winter Wonderland theme. Enjoy a nativity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 21st, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Dance the night away at the annual Daddy-Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 22nd, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. We will be celebrating a Winter Wonderland for this year's theme. The evening includes dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-60.
Trustee Pojak.
The Police Department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding the winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Trustee Schroder.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure that they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warning shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. And as a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call 911 for immediate assistance. Also, during periods of extreme weather, the Police Department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, or by calling the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070, or the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050.
It's called for a special Village Board Meeting by the Mayor, Board of Trustees on Thursday, January 16, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to discuss and approve financial year 2024, oblique 2025, mid-year budget. Number three, recognition, Glendale Heights Foundation. Mr. Doug, will you introduce, you know, Connie? Please, Connie.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Connie, Isabel. Connie Barreras and Isabel Baldwin are here. April Hieronymus will join us when she's coming from another meeting. But we're here to kind of just talk about the Glendale Heights Foundation and a grant that the Village helped the Glendale Heights Foundation get in September of 2023, $15,000 grant to assist residents with kind of food insecurity and seniors with food insecurity. And then Connie's here just to kind of talk about how many people they helped, the money they gave, and special thanks to Tony's Finer Foods. Jim Marnos from Tony's Finer Foods couldn't be here tonight, but Tony's Finer Foods was instrumental in assisting the foundation with getting all the gift cards and plus rounding up a lot for our gift cards to help even the numbers out. So Connie, I'll let you talk about what the foundation did.
Just a little bit about the foundation. It's a nonprofit organization incorporated in 2003 to provide limited one-time emergency financial assistance to village residents who are experiencing financial need. In addition to the usual funds we use to provide assistance, the foundation applied for a DuPage County grant in November 2023 and received $15,000 that was distributed to residents last year. The foundation helped over 250 people with gift cards from Tony's Fresh Market and also some seniors who needed help with their utility bills. Thank you to Doug Flint, who brought the grant to our attention and worked with Tanya Maco and the foundation to complete the application. Thank you to Jim Marnos from Tony's Fresh Market Charitable Foundation and the staff at the Glendale Heights Tonys for working with us to obtain gift cards and making a donation to the Christmas Sharing Program, so we were able to donate $5,000 in gift cards. Thank you to Dennis Statura and Tanya for working with us to get gift cards to the Christmas Sharing families and all the work they did to make the Christmas Sharing Program a success. Thank you to Bob, Jennifer, and the rest of the staff at the Senior Center for helping with Tony's gift card distribution to seniors. Thank you to Tanya and the Glendale Heights Police Department, social workers, for helping with gift card distribution to families in need. Finally, thank you to my fellow Foundation Board members, Jeanette, Mike, Bill, Alana, Carol, Isabel, and April. Like, it was a community process. We had lots of people helping us to distribute this money, and it went to a lot of people to help them in their time of need, so it was very great that Doug brought it to our attention. If you're applying to make a tax-deductible donation this year, please consider the foundation, where donations are always welcome and graciously accepted. Lastly, we have a little public service announcement that Isabel will do.
Please volunteer in our community. In the words of Martin Luther King, "Everybody can be great because everybody can serve." Thank you.
Thank you, Connie and Isabel, and everybody else on the foundation. We just wanted to kind of share with the community, the 250 families that were helped by the, it's actually just kind of a small grant, but $15,000 does go a long way, and $50 and $100 in gift cards for food goes a long way, so thank you for arranging all that and getting that all figured out and the logistics of getting all the gift cards there. Foundation did a great job with that. Segueing from that, I'd also like to thank the District 4 DuPage County Board members who assisted us in getting that grant, because it came from the District 4 DuPage County Board members, so thank you to them. Dennis Statura is also here to talk about Christmas sharing, and that just wrapped up, obviously, over Christmas, and Dennis is here to share the amount of families and all the gifts that were, families got and received from the Christmas Sharing Committee.
Good evening, everyone. How's it going? My name is Dennis Statura. I'm here from the Police Department. I'm here today with some awesome Christmas sharing news. This year, we were able to help 124 Glendale Heights families celebrate Christmas, and that roughly equates to a little over 300 kids that were able to receive gifts this year from Santa. None of this could have been possible without the businesses who donated financially, excuse me, the residents from our town who came to pick a family from our giving tree, as well as the schools who also donated as well. Thanks to Kiwanis, we were also able to give out over $5,000 in gift cards to Tonys, as well with the toys that were given to the kids and the families. I wanted to give a special shout-out to the following businesses for their donations, because they went a long way, but including the Charity Golf Classic, which always helps us every single year. Those businesses include AJR International, American Smoke &amp; Vape, Surami Pump, Elm Inc., Ambi Foods LLC, the Glennside Fire District, Top Taylor, Target Plastics, Webster Hoff Corporation, Apostrophe Design, Glendale Commons, Bakehouse, the Islamic Education Center, Spring Systems, Tony's Fresh Market, Clyde's Donuts, and Dr. Joe Williams. Along with those businesses, we've also had a couple toy drives hosted by VFW and Trustee Light, as well as the Sullivan's, Franz's, and Bianca's. Our program is a very unique one. It's not just a department-wide program, it's actually a village-wide program. In an effort also to thank those volunteers that gave their time, a lot of our village staff wanted to go ahead and help out as well. It's not a one-day event, it happens over a month-long process to get in touch with the families, distribute these gifts properly, and do some verification. So I wanted to make sure and give thanks to, I'm sorry?
And to go shopping.
And to go shopping, of course. I want to give special thanks to the employees from each individual facility here at the Village of Glendale Heights. From Parks Rec, I have Matt and Mary. From the Senior Center, Gabby, Bob, Jennifer, and Kathy. From PW, Rebecca and Blanca. From the water treatment plant, Lizette. From Finance, Ally, Janie, and Teresa. From Community Development, John and Debbie. And then from the Police Department, CJ, Nate, Tanya, Jennifer, Ryan, Anna, Kathy, Cynthia, Alma, Isaac, Mona, Monica, and Rosemary. Again, this event is so helpful to all of our families in our town, and it really is something that we as volunteers look forward to, but also a way to give back to our communities that we all here serve for. So thank you all again for your continued support, because together we do make a difference in our community. So thank you guys so much, and I can't wait for Christmas Sharing 2025.
So that was just a quick wrap-up of how the year kind of ended, a very positive note. Thank you again to the Glendale Heights Foundation for that grant that just got closed out, and to Dennis and his team for Christmas sharing. So well over, close to 400, 500 families assisted through both those programs, so thank you.
Next is a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda items only? Anyone from public? None? You have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes, December 12th, 2024. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes, December 12th, 2024. Three, approval of the council payable listing for January 9th, 2025, total amount $7,583,765.68. Four, resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number two, final, for the fleet's building emergency generator project. Five, a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number two, final, for the 2024 sanitary sewer CIPP lining, various locations, project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing professional engineering services for the 2025 sidewalk removal and replacement program. Seven, approval of pay request number two, final, to Visu Sewer of Illinois LLC for the sanitary sewer SIP lining, various locations, total amount not to exceed $36,029.53. Eight, approval of pay request number two, final, the V3 Construction Group Limited for the Menards Pond Restoration Project, total amount not to exceed $25,429.24. Nine, approval of pay request number eight, to Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Klein Creek Restoration Project, total amount not to exceed $2,597.40. Ten, approval of pay request number two, final, to PowerLink Electric LLC for the fleet services building generator project, total amount not to exceed $97,230.83. Eleven, approval of pay request number 15, to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades, total amount not to exceed $791,928.96. Twelve is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Schroder.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, there's none. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? Anyone from public? None? At the second session, there's none. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt? Second, Trustee Siddiqui.
No, I am the one who present, so.
Roll call, please. Mr. Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Siddiqui, you have the committee of the whole.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, January 9th, 2025, to order. Will the Clerk please note who is present?
So noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Would like to add an item, kudos.
Kudos. Okay, and from me also, token of appreciation. Anyone else?
Yes, one of the same lines.
Okay. What was that?
Same lines.
Token of appreciation. Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Okay, committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee?
No, no report.
Okay. Historical Committee?
Okay, of course I have to, at least a little bit. I just wanted to give a report on, I had received some kudos from residents on our first shot at a Kris Kringle Market. It went over well, people were very happy about it and looked forward to the future to see what we can do with it. I do have some fun stuff coming up for the historic house itself, right around Halloween, so keep in touch. That's about all I got.
Okay, thank you. Audience Committee? Mary, you have anything for audience committee?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee?
No report.
Okay, Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
All right, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee? Mary? Senior Citizens Advisory?
Yes, I have something. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have been talking, and I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
I just want to tell you that today, the seniors had soup and salad, and it was an excellent turnout. Both seniors that are sitting out there and at home, please come to the Senior Center, you're missing so many good times. And when you get to know some of these seniors, they're lovely people. So I can't say enough about our Senior Center. Of course, I'm a little prejudiced being a senior, but anyway, we do have a wonderful Senior Center, and you won't be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Public Works Department, Mr. McCumber and staff, for handling the number of water main breaks that have occurred here within the past couple weeks. Always occurs at this time of year, but this seems to be a cluster, and your people took care of them efficiently and quickly and with minimal disruption to the residents, so thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, it's me. On the behalf of Village District 2 residents and as trustee, I would extend my deepest gratitude for all the employees for their hard work, especially getting this Oslet Grant for our park, which is going to be constructed at the Simons' property. This achievement reflects your commitment to enhancing our community and creating spaces that will benefit residents for years to come. Your efforts in navigating the grant process and presenting our vision have paid off in a meaningful way. This park will serve as a cornerstone for connection, recreation, and pride in our village. Thank you for professionalism, persistence, and passion for making our village a better place. Please know that your work has not gone unnoticed and is greatly appreciated by all. This park is long overdue in my district, people were asking, because the Sherwood Apartment area is densely populated and there was no park. So thanks for getting the grant, and thanks to the Board for approving my request to have this park on that property. Thank you very much. Mr. Light?
My turn. Awesome. I'm gonna kind of mirror Bill to certain extent. I want to thank all the people that handled all the water main breaks that we had had, our streets, our sewer, all Public Works that handled all this stuff. It wasn't, it was one bad incident after another, and they handled it really wonderfully, especially in the cold and all the stuff that they have to endure. I was amazed. I mean, I said thank you to all of them. And I also want to say thank you to the PD for also, one, being out there at the same time handling all the traffic accidents and stuff that we were, you know, having to deal with during the ice and the snow, and not snow, but the ice, and to handle a certain situation that I had had in my district where I had missed an email, and I, you know, reluctantly, I was shocked, but I did have the PD go out there and take care of some stuff, and they did a wonderful job, or George, I thank you, and I thank the officers for taking care of that. It was, it shows a lot. So I thank everybody working through the cold. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yes?
I would like to say something.
Sure.
You know, we're always thanking the employees, and we really should. Our employees are very, very good people, but sometimes we forget about how wonderful our residents are. I had a situation recently where my car stopped and I couldn't move. You would be amazed at how many people came to see if they could help me. And if any of those people are listening to this meeting, I want to thank you personally. I know I thanked you when you were helping me, but I can't thank you enough. So we really have wonderful residents here, and sometimes we just take them for granted. And if you look around, you know, people are just wonderful people if you're wonderful back to them. So let's try a new thing this year, okay? And let's be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment from Marietta Britt?
Good evening, everyone. Marietta Britt, Glendale Heights. About a month ago, I brought an issue to the Board in regards to rental properties, and I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight about that, making sure that landlords understand what their requirements are for their tenants, taking care of the grass if they don't include it in their lease agreements, making sure they understand parking restrictions, noise restrictions, and things like that. What tends to happen, unfortunately, the duplex next to mine went rental after quite a while, and the landlord did not share much information to the tenants. So I just would like to make sure that that gets communicated out, because what it tends, really what it tends to make me want to do is put mine up for rent and get out of Dodge. So I just think it would make Glendale Heights a better place to live for those of us who still own our properties. Thank you. Mary, you look like you're...
Mr. Maritato?
Yeah, Doug, I know we just lost, we just lost a guy in Comdev. He went to someplace else?
We have, yeah, one of our building inspectors is moving on to another position elsewhere, and just this week, we started our, one of our new code enforcement officers. So one of the items that she's referring to is the code enforcement activities and the rental inspections that go on. We conduct rental inspections annually, and the code enforcement activities are regularly carried out. We respond to citizen complaints, we work with the Police Department, whenever we have anything. Annually, we have a large number of law and grass and some of the items that she was referring to, and we have a constant response to that, issuing violation notices, giving them amount of time to take care of it. And again, we work, CSOs from the Police Department help assist with some of the activities that our inspectors are involved with.
Are we still short down there?
Well, in the building inspector, we will be once he leaves. He's still giving it some time. He's, we have... Oh, we're, well, in the building inspector, we will be once, uh, he leaves. He's still giving it some time. He's, we have a couple of weeks with him.
Okay, I, I know we're short, and I, you know, I never gave kudos to you, Doug, last year. I know we're starting a new year, but, I mean, kudos to you because you're running four departments, because we have no department hats. So I just want to say thank you for staying with us, because everybody else is leaving us.
Yeah.
But you're sticking around, which I appreciate. I do anyway. I, I know the board does too.
And now he's a clerk too.
And, and you are secretary. I, I didn't want to say secretary, but you also are secretary.
There's some really good people in leadership that makes things run pretty smooth. I'm not saying that we don't need people, but the people we have are just good people that are doing yeoman's work to keep everything moving.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address the board?
Mr. Epstein, Glendale Heights, Illinois. I want to talk about the election commission. I've never seen a group of people base a decision on, I think, not on fact, but all I was hearing in that room was the other lawyer saying, "I think these signatures are fraudulent. I think none of them were factual." The DuPage County Clerk's Office had approved a number of signatures of Mr. Kokar, and those signatures provided enough for him to be on this ballot. So we're doing the same thing we did four years ago, where he's having to appeal it, because some people have a problem with him being on the ballot, probably because of his race. But, but the, the, the fact is, is that there's some racist people in this board, and because of the fact that we have people on here judging him, and his signatures, where there were enough of them valid for him to go up there, and the DuPage County people have said that he had enough, but these people that were in this village here saying that he'd, they brought it down enough that he did not have enough then. After that, they threw out, saying these are fraudulent. And they went through a whole bunch of them. Two years ago, when I ran, I challenged probably thirty percent of my opponents. They only allowed one before they threw out the rest of my challenges and said, "That's enough." So there's some bias among this village board members that are on the election board. At least we won't have to have all three of them next time when this comes up in a couple of years, and I'm glad of that. I've never seen such a kangaroo court as I did for this thing. Have a good day.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to add, you know, to that, that this.
Uh, hold on, Mr. Kokar. Yeah. You need, you need to talk?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I will add into, uh, statement of by, uh, Mr. Epstein, that this board, village board meeting, this village board, six trustees and one clerk, they are working as a mafia against me, and they threw me out. Listen.
Mr. Kokar?
They threw me out. This is slap. Let me talk, you know. Let me talk.
If you talk civil by civil, then I will let you talk.
You cannot decide what I let you talk, you know.
No, you can not.
So this is actually slap on the resident, on the face of resident, that they threw, uh, they slap on my resident, you know, who signed on my signature petition. Shame on this board and shame on this clerk, you know. These people are corrupt, you know, and Siddiqui, his brother-in-law.
Again.
He's, again, he's fighting for those cricket field, and see back, you know, he has two son, wait five minutes out, then those, his case will be promoted, and other people will be promoted, and my resident will be on the same, you know. You know, shame on you.
Okay, anyone in the public?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Uh, good evening, mayor, board, everybody else. My name is John Horak of Glendale Heights. Reason why I'm here tonight is to bring to your attention an issue that's been going on for way too long where I live. Little bit of history. When we first moved in, shortly after that, we were awakened to the sound of, basically, it sounded like a snowplow scraping a street with no snow. We looked out the window, and to the side of our house, there was a vehicle that had struck the house across the street, came across towards our house, hit a tree, flipped over, went upside down across, and landed on the grass. First incident. Had a discussion with Mayor Jackson and the police about speeding and aggressive driving in our neighborhood, and nothing really occurred after that. Second incident, twenty twenty one. I brought some photos for everybody to see. This was a motorcycle going down Brandon Avenue. Again, directly in the side of our house. Two thirty in the morning, we were awakened to a, a sound, it sounded like a tree. Here's another photo. As you can see, a lot of damage, right? Two incidences. That'd be a lot for one person, wouldn't it? Prior to Thanksgiving this year, we had a vehicle, again, strike the house across our street and proceed across the street towards our house, hit the retaining wall, went to the left, hit our tree. If the tree wasn't there, they would have been in the garage this time. This is another picture of the damage. My wife sits on the other side of that wall. That's how close they came to making this a serious incident. So this is the third incident since I've been in Glendale Heights. I have an overhead view of my neighborhood. There are seven houses that have had ten incidents with a vehicle since I've been in Glendale Heights. This is why I'm here tonight. I want to talk about a solution. Don't have a lot of time. However, I am available to discuss this. I'm a safety director. I do a lot of things in safety. Happy to discuss it. I thank the police. They actually have been out there quite a few. Little bit of time, just ten seconds?
You can go ahead, please.
They've been out there, beefed up patrols. There needs to be a comprehensive solution. I have some suggestions. We don't have enough time to discuss them tonight. I am available. If I don't hear from you, I will be back, because I will mention them the next time. Thank you for your time.
John, let me give you an extra second or two. I do, uh, I will follow up with you. I mean, we've had great conversation about this in the last couple of, uh, last couple of weeks. Yours, you were the one email I did miss, and I apologize for that. Um, since that point in time, I think we're doing pretty good, making good progress, are we not, or we have more work to do?
Can I respond just quick?
Yeah, yeah.
So, they put up a curve, curve ahead sign.
Sure.
The people that travel down Brandon all live in that area. Everybody knows there's a curve there. That sign will not be enough. If there was a sign at Woodside and Brandon to slow the traffic down, because every time they come around that curve is where we have an issue, and you can see. I'll be happy to leave these photos with you. I made them for you.
Please.
You can take a look at them.
Please.
Again, there's some solutions. The police have been great. I cannot thank them enough. It has helped traffic. But there needs to be a comprehensive plan, right? It can't be just, okay, now we're good and, and go away. The public, we need to help them with their behaviors.
John, did you get a copy of the traffic study, by the way?
Can I mention the traffic study?
Sure.
So I have several traffic studies, right? One traffic study shows a low, you know, a low incident rate, thirty-one to forty. I have another traffic study that shows four times that amount. Which one is accurate? All of those are from three to five days at a time. It's like taking a photo or a snapshot in time. As a safety person, if I showed up on a job or a facility one time, that's not going to give me an accurate measurement of what's really happening.
No, it's not.
There are other ways to, you know, get the data on the traffic, other than that trailer or the sign.
Well, I will set up a meeting. Would it be okay if I set a meeting up with you and, and with George?
Absolutely.
All right, fantastic. That's what we'll do then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Josephine Dango. I'm from Glendale Heights. Uh, I'm also in the neighborhood of Mr. John, so I parked to, in front of my door, and they came and hit my car the night, and the person left, so they destroyed my car. I have to fix it. The person did not show up or anything. Secondly, I wrote, uh, concerning my backyard, when I came to Glendale Heights in twenty twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, uh, the village path, they were cleaning their, their path, and then, all of a sudden, I think within two years, I think the people that they are cleaning the place, they changed, and they are not more cleaning the path behind my fence, and it become bushy. I have road here, and there is no action. No action has been taken. In nineteen twenty-nine, Glen Rock Lane, Glendale Heights.
Uh, what's your address?
Nineteen twenty-nine.
Uh-huh.
Glen Rock Lane, Glendale Heights.
Glen Rock Lane, okay.
Hey, excuse me, what, what, what is the, what's the issue?
It sounds like there, there's a path behind there that we need to look into, so let me look into that.
So there's, there's an easement, or there's, there's a piece of property behind her house that is kind of no man's land, that backs up to her fence, and it's, it's another piece of property that we're still trying to determine ownership of, that we don't know who actually owns it and is supposed to maintain it. But the village will go out there and, and take it and look at it like we're doing the other pieces of property, and, uh, figure out what the best thing is to do to clean up your property.
Yeah, I was told that that's part of the village, because when I came in there, the village was cleaning it. They were cleaning back of that place, and later on, they have not been cleaning there, and in that field, and they don't more come there, and the place become so bushy in a way that animals are coming in my home, and they are even disturbing the ceiling.
How long has this been going on, ma'am?
Twenty, twenty twenty. Nineteen twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, well, can I get your name and address, and we can get in contact with you?
My name is Josephine, J O S E P H I N E, and my last name is N as in Nancy, D as in Doc, A as in Apple, N as in Nancy, G as in George, O as in orange, and my address is nineteen twenty-nine, Glen Rock Lane, one letter.
Don't give me your phone number.
Seven, seven.
Give me that in private. Madam, not in public.
I don't mind.
It's okay.
How about after a meeting, you can see with Doug? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry, it's your meeting.
Uh, Mr. Flint, can you please arrange meeting with this lady, Ms. Josephine and?
Sure.
Other, sir, what's your name? Yes.
I, you were speaking, so I'm just waiting for you.
Yeah, can you send me tomorrow, please?
Tomorrow?
In my office, yes. Yeah, Mr. Flint, take, you know, this, uh, meeting for this lady, and we will talk, you know.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. How's everyone? Happy New Year. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation for the unsung heroes of the Water Department. On Sunday, January fifth, around nine AM, they faced the challenge of a water main break under some of the most difficult conditions you can imagine. With temperatures at just seventeen degrees, you step up, and they stepped up, and they worked hard to repair the lines and restore service to the community. And again, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, because people don't take the time to recognize their efforts, because you don't see them most of the time. But I certainly did. So again, thanks, kudos to the Water Department and Public Works. Uh, moving forward, this is for code enforcement. Sorry, buddy. I wanted to bring to your attention that furniture mattresses continue to be left alongside the dumpsters at Ellen Crossing without being picked up on garbage day. This has become an ongoing issue, and I would like to request that code enforcement contact the property management once again to have the items removed. It would be greatly appreciated if the situation could be addressed promptly. And then lastly, it took my thunder about the stop signs, because we discussed it in the last board meeting, and it's a big safety concern, and obviously, that's the area that I live in and represent as far as the homeowners association. So, I wanted to follow up with Doug and with Chief Pappas about this from last, last month's meeting. If you can kindly provide us an update as to where we are with the analysis of the traffic and also the signage, which, in my opinion, a stop sign at Woodside would be greatly appreciated. But if I can just take a moment of your time to get a response.
John is right, and I am gonna tell everybody here, and everybody here, the violations that we had, we had the officers out there, very minimal for speeding. Most of the stops, the ones that they were, were for stop sign violations. What I'm getting at is the people at speed are gonna go through the stop sign. I've said this for a while now. Most of our roads are too big, Brandon being one of them. Acting Village Mayor, Min- Village Administrator Flint is working on Cardinal Drive. You can't just buy new roads all the time, but when we're doing Cardinal Drive, there's going to be a different configuration through environmental design. John is right. That's what needs to be done. In order to get people to slow down, you need something that will slow them down. The roadway by design will get them to slow down. You can have a speed sign, you can have a stop sign. Unfortunately, people aren't considerate, and they don't care. Kim Darling brought this up, Tony Andrade brought this up once before. It is not anybody's certain age, gender, race, religion. There are just people out there who don't care, and they will disregard no matter what, unless they're forced to do it. And by designing the roadways, twenty-first century roadways, that's how you do it. So, I, I give kudos to John, because he is right. You need to do things that will prevent things, not just keep putting bandages on there. He referenced back to Linda Jackson time. We could keep putting bandages on, but if you're not gonna fix it long term, then it's wrong. But it's gonna take time. You can't just keep building roadways. We all know that. It costs a lot of money for roadways. But in our roadway plans, we can configure those in there, and I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, and then one last one, while we're talking about traffic studies and everything else. On Scarborough Drive, we're a smaller street than what you have on Gregory. All right, that's a fact. The bus service, and I know this is not something you control in terms of their route, but they're using Scarborough as the exchange off of Brandon to get onto Gregory, and then get to the apartments. If someone has parked there temporarily or picking up somebody, we have to get out of the way for the bus to get through. Why can't they use Gregory, which is a much wider street?
You're talking school buses?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it's high school or middle school?
It's middle school.
Middle school?
We could talk to them. We'll talk to the, the, uh, school district.
Just, it, because again, we, uh, it's just too narrow, and with cars parked on one side of the street, it becomes not only just a traffic situation, but also...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Martika King, counselor and resident for the news. And I want to address the upcoming election in April. And I've been thinking about it, you know, in terms of those who are running, and I'm not sure of everyone, because I'm not in any inner circles, you know, actually, but I have some thoughts, and, uh, I'm guessing, educated guess, that, uh, most of the people in our town, as well as the state and the nation, are, you know, kind of have had enough politics and false promises, et cetera. So, a few thoughts. I suggest those running for office be true to the people of the town. Share your experience in leadership, your accomplishments in service, your record of achievements serving in this town or elsewhere, your qualifications, understanding, and experience in success in addressing these issues. Speak of the needs and current challenges of our town. Learn and address the economic, economic, excuse me, challenges of the residents of Glendale Heights. Do not make false promises, but share your plans and hopes for the future. I'm almost done. Um, oh, okay. So, um, I want to thank and honor three, you know, men that I really think have done a remarkable job in this town. Um, primarily, first, I acknowledge Doug Flynn, former police chief, current, uh, what are you? what are you? Village administrator, forgive me. Um, so for many reasons. George Pappas and his team of officers that are absolutely remarkable in this town. And for Doug Flynn, too. And, uh, also for Dave in marketing, whose last name I don't know.
Denti.
Denti. Um, for all of his, uh, accomplishments and, you know, really providing an incredible appearance of enormous unity and leadership, um, which is, you know, God bless you, Shadr, I pray for you, but I, you know, you know, um, and you know. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
What's your grade, John?
Second.
Okay. Call I?
Call in favor?
Call in favor?
Hi.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.